Only yesterday, former senior Nairobi City Council officials and a former permanent secretary began their three-year jail sentences after they were convicted for their role in the 283 million shillings cemetery land scandal from 10 years ago. Although they still have the right to appeal the conviction and subsequent jailing could just be one of the very few battles won on that front. This coming at a time when detectives are also probing the alleged loss of close to 9 billion shillings at the NYSE through fraud and tendering. Seeing what has befallen the former city bosses should the culprits in the NYSE saga feel worried.
It was a sweaty ending for former Nairobi town clerk John Gakuo, former local government permanent secretary Sami Kirui, and two top officials of the defunct city council as the Anti-Corruption Court rendered its verdict over the Mavoko Cemetery land scandal. The quartet was listed by the Kenya Anti-Corruption Commission as the masterminds of the infamous 120-acre Mavoko Cemetery land saga that cost the taxpayer 283 million shillings eight years ago. Gakuo and Kirui beginning their tenure as guests of the state for their role in the controversial cemetery land purchase. Chief magistrate Douglas Ogot ruling that there were persons of authority who abdicated their responsibility by allowing and legal procurement.
Accused one and two are sentenced to both a period of three years imprisonment and a fine of Kenya shillings 1 million.
Former city council legal secretary Mary Ngheve and Alexander Musanga who chaired the tender committee were also found culpable and sent behind bars. They were accused of fabricating a report purporting that the committee had okayed purchase of the 120-acre rocky parcel of land that was ultimately found unsuitable as a public burial site.
In count three, accused three and four are sentenced to a period of three years imprisonment. Father accused three to pay a mandate to refine of Kenya shillings 52 million in default to serve one another one year imprisonment. Accused four to pay a mandate to refine of 32 million in default, another one year imprisonment.
The prosecution team proved that the four accused persons had received substantial financial benefits towards the procurement of the land whose price was way above the prevailing market rates. The Mavoko land was intended to replace the Langata Cemetery that was almost full. Amani Congress leader Musalia Mudavadi was heading the local government docket at the time of the scandal. He was however able to escape prosecution with Kirui who was his PS forced to shoulder the burden. The then-city mayor Godfrey Majua was also let off the hook despite calls for his prosecution with Gakuo forced to carry the cross. Gakuo, Kirui, Ngheve, and Musanga have 14 days to appeal their jail sentences.
Yes, the four individuals have the right to appeal within the next 14 days. To help us with this discussion this morning, we're privileged to have Duncan O'Katch, an advocate of the High Court. Good morning, Karibusana.
Thank you.
Charles Kipkule, a public policy expert. Charles, it's good to have you in studio.
Thank you.
And last but definitely not least, Alutalala Buhwana, also an advocate of the High Court.
Thank you.
Good morning, Karibusana.
Nice to meet you.
Now, of course, these individuals, we're talking about the former town clerk, the PS, and two other senior, former senior Nairobi City County officials have a right to appeal within the next 14 days. But coming at a time when you're talking about this NYSE scandal where many Kenians feel that this is the highest, probably the highest level of impunity, given the scandal that was there before. People felt despite the public outcry that you could still go back and probably even steal more money. Don't you feel that probably this is one of those things that we should be celebrating and saying, yes, finally? Even if it's after 10 years, someone has been sent to jail. Duncan?
Mr. Indimuli, I think that is actually true because for a very long time, Kenians are used to having these very high-profile scandals. People are prosecuted whether they are scapegoats or otherwise. But the ending is always known. It's like predetermined. There's always a lapse mostly in the investigation and in the prosecution process itself. And none other than the chief justice has said that there is a lacuna in this particular issue. Because it's like the same funds which have been procured through these particular processes are used to scuttle the criminal justice system. And that is why it comes as a shocker to many Kenians that this happened. You can see that the person in the name of John Gakuo was actually being fronted as a possible replacement of the deputy governor in Nairobi County. Yet this particular case has been pending for six years. It shows you the contempt with which people look at such cases. And when it comes to a point where at least a court of law has actually managed to not only convict but to actually sentence punitively, pass punitive sentences to these particular individuals, it is a wake-up call. It is a start, the beginning of a process. And I think it's a message being sent to all other judges and magistrates in this division.
Yes, you had mentioned that, yes, some people get to be taken to the dock, but probably are scapegoats. Do you have that feeling that probably the people we're talking about here were scapegoats? Probably not the real culprits behind that scandal are still working free?
In this particular situation, you cannot call them scapegoats because it has been demonstrated on a scale of beyond reasonable doubt that they not only participated but they actually benefited. And that is why there's the pecuniary punishment that has been attached to the prison sentences that they've been given. Be that as it may, they were not the godfathers of this particular scam. There are people who must have been the principals for lack of a better word in this particular process who have not been prosecuted and still that is actually the shortcoming of this process. Because yes, we have convicted these particular small fishes. As usual, Kenians, we go for those small fishes. But the main people, as you can have seen the story there, for one reason or another did not actually, some of them didn't even take plea, did not even find themselves in court. Some found themselves in court and maneuvered their way out of that particular process. It's really sad also.
A former city town clerk, a former PS, small fish, really?
Well, they are not small fish, but to the extent that they were not the only players in that corruption scandal, then they were greater fish. You know, the issue of smallness and greatness will not have a limit. It's relative. So the only problem that we have right now is that there's still a number of individuals who are complicit, who are still working free. And also, I am happy that this is happening at this time and the courts are really asserting themselves very strongly on cases that are presented to them. And even coming from a period where the courts came out very strongly to rule on issues that were electoral based, political based, and there was a feeling that maybe they will be intimidated but they stood strong. So if this is the precedent that has been set and it is continuing like this, then we wish that this now goes higher. And right now, the courts have an opportunity with the new scandal that has come up to really do some justice for Kenians. Because for a very long time, we've seen that, maybe you can look at three years, three-year sentence stealing 280 million shillings. And the other day, someone in Mombasa, two guys stole 130 shillings. They were unable to pay 130 shillings and they were sentenced also to a more punitive jail term. So I think also one of the things that the courts need also to, in our justice system, is the leniency of these cases relative to the magnitude of the theft that occurs and especially the damage that is done to the public office. But importantly, this is an opportunity to stretch the arm of the law and also bring it up, especially now that we have a case that has come up with the NYSE issue.
Yes, of course, given Kenya's history, Golden Bag, all these scandals, even the first NYSE scandal, there's 791 million shillings, no convictions, not even a single one. We were entertained to such a spectacle when the Public Accounts Committee of the National Assembly bimed live their proceedings and they were banging tables. Nothing happened to anyone. In fact, that process was seen as sanitizing some of those people accused. Probably that is what has even emboldened people to feel that, yes, you can go back and even steal more. Nothing will happen to you. But when they see what the court did yesterday, don't you think that could just serve as a deterrent, however small?
Thank you, Indimuli, for the invite. I concur with what my colleagues have said to the extent that my learned colleague has said these are small fish. But let us contextualize this cemetery saga. That at that time, Kirui was the PS. The PS was the accounting officer of the ministry, meaning that the back stops with him. Then there was Gakuo. Gakuo was the town clerk of the Nairobi City Council. Again, the CEO and therefore the accounting officer of Nairobi City Council. To that extent, therefore, they held the primary responsibility as the overall.
But so they could be the biggest fish?
In that context, yes. And I want to believe that given the process that this case has taken, the judiciary has taken all due diligence and based on the evidence before them, the decision to convict these two, three, four gentlemen and lady is well-founded. But from what my colleagues are saying, this is just indicative of the bigger problem that we have in the country. That we believe that Gakuo and Kirui on their own, knowing very well that this country has political leadership, knowing that we have a CEO in this country, we have a deputy CEO, then there were ministers below, there was a minister in charge of that. It is not possible that these guys could have the temerity to do this in broad daylight without having the principles. And that's why my colleague here is saying that the principles must be lacking somewhere. But that said and done, Indimuli, how I wish that this came much earlier. And how I wish that this would proceed in earnest to other areas that we are seeing. Man, with doctors being alleged to steal patients' hearts, with NYSE now becoming even bigger than it was in terms of the budget and the theft becoming bigger, we are in trouble as a country. These thefts has made us citizens so vulnerable, so hopeless that we don't even trust in ourselves anymore as citizens of this country.
Yes. Well, Duncan, looking at what and the kind of probe that the first NYSE scandal was taken through, how different was it? Because up until now, no convictions. In fact, all people were declared innocent. Yes, because none could be proved to be culpable. Yet this, we were entertained to that PSC probe where people even admitted to carrying money in sacks. This city council cemetery saga, the money was not exchanged in cash as such. How come we are seeing convictions in this one and not on the NYSE scandal, the first one?
Indimuli, I always tell people to expect very little from parliament and based on the process that we have. I can tell you that if one of these people like, let's say, Mr. Kirui is to successfully appeal and maybe on our technicality manage to have a successful appeal, he may decide to vie in his constituency. He will actually win by landslide. And all the presidential candidates will be wooing him into his party. And these are the characters that we have in parliament. Because they use the same, same finances to come and give it to citizens or maneuver their way or give it even to principals in parties, get nominations and all that. They make their way to parliament. And you can see the report from the PSC actually did not, actually found several people culpable, especially at the committee stage. But because of politics that play out at the gallery and several interests, it never saw the light of day. You remember the firm that Morcomen is associated with was heavily indicted in that particular process. Be that as it may, he still actually was promoted to become the majority leader in the senate. So it actually tells you how we as a society view these particular individuals. There is a doctor who was actually not qualified and was actually practicing. And when he was found out on news, he was all over the newspapers. What happened? He went to his home village and was actually vying. What I'm trying to say is that you cannot, you cannot get better leadership than what you deserve. This is what Kenians are akin to. And that's why, and I still go back to my initial point, that even these particular individuals, they are not the big fishes. At the moment, these big fishes will always maneuver their way around it. They can actually find a route. Even some people get to prison and because of the money they actually squandered, they have a very lavish lifestyle. So what I expect even at this particular point is that our saviors will be the courts of law. And the moment we have a proper criminal justice system, especially dealing with these corruption issues, that is the point where we'll say we are starting to gain. And this is a first step that we are seeing. I hope others will take this particular bravery of this particular magistrate. Because we have many of these cases spread out. The issue about the timeline is also a factor that we should look at. Six years is not something that we should just celebrate and say we have achieved a conviction and a sentence within six years. It is a start. Yes, we can clap. But there is always room for improvement. And that is the only deterrent that we'll have going forward in terms of all these scandals that we are seeing.
Charles, the judiciary also always takes the flak when it comes to such failures. What we see as failure, the failure to get any conviction in such a big scandal like the NYSE 791 billion shillings scandal. But how different is it? Because both these cases were taken through parliament. Is there, can it be said that probably the involvement of parliament in probing this affects what happens at the judiciary? Because yes, once we saw the process in parliament before the Public Accounts Committee, it tended to sanitize. We saw it as a bigger process. Eventually, no conviction in the courts. This one, the city council cemetery saga, yes, parliament probed it. But after a while, after it died out, years later, the judiciary comes back and actually gets some convictions. Do you think that the involvement of parliament and at the time of the involvement, it affects to some extent what happens in the courts?
First of all, Fred, you know, the issue of justice is a multi-sexual issue. It is not just one institution that is charged with ensuring that maybe we get conviction. So when you get to a point where probably a case fails to a conviction that is not achieved in court, then you may also want to look at the quality of the prosecution or even the evidence that was adduced at that level. So to that extent, I think the primary issue that we may want to look at is what is the quality of that multi-sexual cooperation within the justice sector? But when you look at parliament, I personally have a problem with the idea that whenever there is an issue of serious corruption in our country, then the first port of call is parliament where we use a political process where we'd rather have really gone through a legal process to deal with the issue. Because when you go to parliament, they sit in a committee, they discuss, then they do a report, which is mainly looked at through the lenses of politics and not through the lenses of maybe the legal considerations and even the facts that are before the table. And for a very long time, graft in Kenya has had a very funny circle where it begins in parliament, then maybe there are someone's or it begins at someone's in the ESEC. Then you see that big man being accompanied by a lot of people, sometimes even dancers and all that. When they come out, the court, the trail goes cold after maybe the committee releases a report that is shoddy or is really influenced by political considerations. So the idea that we really want to move away from is looking at parliament as the last resort, especially on matters to deal with corruption. Of course, they have a responsibility, but that should not be like when you say the committee is sitting to probe this issue, then that is the end of it. The main port of call should be in our courts where justice is really being seen to be served. And for that to happen, then you also need to see the Office of the DPP doing very good prosecutions, also the cooperations with the DCI so that we have a strong case. Because most of these other cases fail in court because they say you are not able to get strong cases by the prosecutions. So I'm happy that at least in this case, there was proof beyond doubt as the lawyers are actually telling us that there was proof beyond doubt that this case was done and they were able to really bring a strong case to parliament.
Probably the question should be, do you think that probably any kind of probe carried out by the Public Accounts Committee of the National Assembly has a potential to affect any other investigation outside by the DCI or the ESEC to any extent?
Indimuli, yes and no. But I think if you contextualize this issue further, we, there is one single thread that you are identifying from what my colleagues are saying and even from the train, from the trend of your questioning, that we have, the problem we have is political. The trouble we have is political leadership. And that is why some of us in political commentaries have been saying that until we fix our top political leadership in this country so that we have the right political ethics and ethos, which then cascade downwards to all the people beneath it, we'll still continue having a problem. Why is it, like they have rightly put it, why is it that in some cases, when cases begin at the parliamentary select committees, somehow the trail disappears in some others, not all, in some others and in others it doesn't? Why is it that whenever we have high-profile cases, like you have asked in the beginning of the program, high-profile cases, we do not see convictions? Can you blame the judiciary? The answer is no. The problem begins with our governance, ethics, and ethos, particularly from the political leadership. Why? That any high-profile crime, suspected crime, alleged crime, where politicians have an interest, they are bound to interfere with the process such that by the time these suspects are arraigned before court, only a few, and even those ones, are just meant to hide the real suspects. And even those who are arraigned before court, the investigations are so messed up that the charges that are drafted and brought before the judge are such that the judge is only left with one option, to dismiss the matter, to acquit the fellow. So the problem begins from our politics. It is the politicians who are doing this. And so you rightly argue therefore that Gakuo and Kirui, six years, governments have changed. The political bigwigs have changed. You may argue that because they are political fathers, as my brother called sponsors, I think it's okay, you know, call them sponsors. The political sponsors have since lost traction. They are no longer the movers and shakers of the politics. Therefore, they are now vulnerable. And that must teach our brothers and sisters who are in positions where they can influence some of these deals, that when finally the chickens' ham come home to roost, you're left alone. And the judge will not ask where your sponsor is. At this show, we can say there are sponsors, but the judge does not care about who the sponsor was. The judge looks at the draft charge before him and the decision is arrived at based on what is before the judge.
Duncan, do you think that probably there will be some value to be gained in the kind of investigations conducted by the DCI and ESEC if the Public Accounts Committee of the National Assembly would step back from this matter for a while? Probably allow those other arms to do their investigations and if at all, their convictions to be made, to follow that route first before parliament can touch this matter? This, we're talking about now the new NYSE scandal.
From what we have seen in the past, there is actually value in this particular committee stepping back. And the reason for that is because we are saying they politicize the matter. Therefore, you find depending with the political interests involved in that matter or the suspicion that this matter may be, some parties may actually take control of this matter to achieve certain political goals. Then it takes a certain detergent, a certain detergent which is not in good consonance with the ideals that we want to achieve as a country in the fight against corruption. However, as I say that, the issue will be, does PSC have the mandate in law to delve into these particular scandals and do what they are doing? Yes, they have. So we cannot come and divest them of that jurisdiction. But in the interest of achieving the ends that all of us want, for once in a lifetime, they can say that let us try and pull back and see if things will be done differently. And the reason for that is because what goes to court is not the public accounts report. It is not enough to convict. It doesn't even see the light of day in court. What goes to court is the investigations by the DCI. And that's why I have always said cases are won or are lost at the DCI. And that is why, and I dare tell you here, that if you stay, what was there previously is that you steal money, you just set aside money for the DCI and you win cases. You don't even need a good lawyer. You don't even need to know who the judge will be. All you need is to have people at the DCI who will investigate. Because they are the people who present whatever they have investigated to the prosecutor, the Office of the ODPP. The Office of the ODPP does not do its own investigations. They can only direct, do investigations, give it to us. So if you, and that is how these cases have been failing, they deal with that. Whatever comes to court is actually something that cannot even achieve a conviction. Actually, they should be terminated the moment that someone takes plea. And a case in point, you can see even the kind of charge sheet that was given and that was produced in court in the Mbugwa matter. It is dead on arrival. So what do you expect? That's why I'm telling you, unless we internalize and deal with these particular agencies strictly so that if they are inept, we do away with them. If they can achieve, then we go to the ODPP. Are you capable of prosecuting? Yes. If they are not, we do away with them. Then it comes to court. If all these two agencies have done their part, investigations are so apt, the prosecution has presented this evidence in line with the evidence act and the rules of procedure in court, the judge should convict. If the judge doesn't convict, then the problem will be at the judiciary's doorstep. And none other than the chief justice said the other day, give us this evidence, bring them in the manner that is supposed to be adduced, we will convict.
We have a new boss of the DCI. We have a new boss of the Office of the DPP. Are you optimistic that this time round, things will be a bit different?
Yeah, I am optimistic. And just before I go to that, I think on the issue of the parliamentary committees, I think we may need to look at, their role mainly is not, as is rightly put it, to present cases before court. But theirs is to determine whether these individuals who are really found, who have been revealed that they are suspecting a corruption, should continue to hold office. So for them, their mandate should end in terms of making sure that these individuals do not remain in public office so that they continue doing more damage. But when the, now that pattern continues, then the justice sector players, the key ones, should now take up the case and ensure convictions are achieved. And now on the issue of the new director of public prosecutions, I think for myself and from what he has done, starting from when he took over office, I am optimistic. Because he has signaled that he's not going, he wants to do things differently. And there had been a perception previously that the previous Office of DPP was captive to other forces, which was therefore seen as that there were too many, even when you look at this case, it is 10 years in between. But in the intervening period, that 10-year period, there have been mega scandals in our country and there have been no convictions. Therefore, that will tell you so much about the Office of the DPP and really the quality of the office during that time. So I have hope that the new office bearer who is in, and especially with this background, is able to do much. But I also think that there is still a lot that needs to be done at level of DCI and even basically just trying to fix things. But I remain optimistic because it's new and let things go.
One Alutalala totally disagrees with that.
Yeah, I mean. Because we are very bad students of history. I mean, who is the new ODPP, who is the new DPP? Haji, how does he land into that office? His father, Yusuf Haji, the longest-serving PC, now who is a senator in the senate, in charge of the Security Committee, is the father. No problem that they are related.
He is a qualified advocate of the High Court.
By all means. And so are many others who are qualified. So Skiria Katabiko, wasn't he? Very qualified. Why didn't he work it out? This is a new wine and old wine skin. What the difference will he make?
So no hope at all?
Be a good student of history in this country and you will speak from a position of knowledge. He who does not read history knows not where he is, not where he's going. We will not have a reprieve, not even, not in the DCI. If indeed, I read yesterday, I think he was very optimistic and saying, my boss will not be caught. We've heard it many times. If he really wants to buy the bullet, there is no end time in criminal investigations. All the scandals that have come and have not been handled properly, he can revive them. Let him do. And there's no better place to start than the Office of Edward Oko. Yes, the Auditor General. And as recent as last week, he was still saying that money has disappeared everywhere. You don't even know where to start everywhere. Let him start there. So for me, I'm not so optimistic. And this not to discourage the officers who have come into the office. The point I'm making is it is a new wine in an old wine skin. I see no much hope until we fix our politics.
New wine in old wine skin, you also agree with Yoculie?
I actually agree totally with him. And you cannot have an individual who is directly linked or whose family directly linked to one of the political divides in the country. It actually tells you if when it, when actually it heats up, there is only a phone call from your dad which will tell you both, I'm being told A, B, C, D.
Correct.
That possibility, we are not saying it will happen or it may happen, but the fact that there's that possibility, it's something that should have been considered when someone is taking up this position. Secondly, and that is in terms of another agency you're not looking at, we have the Ethics and Anti-Corruption Commission whereby the person who was given this particular mandate to head this particular entity tells you a lot. It tells you that we have actually, say that all efforts we are trying to use are actually meaningless. We have actually resigned our faith to God and we have just said, what we can do to these people is maybe just forgive. These people are taught to forgive.
You're talking about Archbishop Welydokan.
Yes, we cannot tell you, go and take this person to jail. He will tell you forgive how many times. And if you are slapped this side, you actually change and you are slapped again. It tells you, and that is a very sensitive investigatory arm in these issues of corruption. Such that when you say that now we've decided we'll pray for these people, we'll pray for the country. the country, we actually resign our faith to...
Interesting.